Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 7, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. All right, let's adopt this evening's agenda.
Motion, Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with one addition, one A with a DECA proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Grischoviac and a second by Rayrower. Is there any correction or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that that was an excellent move over there.
Almost like it was pre-planned.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and the agenda is adopted with one addition, one A at DECA. All right, we are up to item one, an oath of office for Police Officer Tomzik. Chief Steiner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my great honor to have the opportunity to introduce our newest Coon Rapids Police Officer to you in the community this evening. And if it seems like we're doing this a lot lately, it's because we're doing this a lot lately. Officer Tomzik is the sixth officer to successfully complete field training in 2023 and to take the oath of office, with six more currently in training and a fresh job posting going up this week in hopes of hiring three more officers. If you're doing the math, that's 15 new officers in just over a year, which represents just under half of our call-taking officers. So, all the officers that you see in blue out there taking calls, we've replaced about half of them this year. So, that's a pretty significant number. If you do recall, with our last class of officers that we introduced to you, what was unique was that all four of them were lateral hires, officers that came to us in good standing from other police departments. And Officer John Tomzik is a continuation of that trend, and he comes to us from the Robinsdale Police Department. Officer Tomzik grew up in Brooklyn Park. He attended Osseo High School and continued his education at North Hennepin Community College. He transferred to Metro State University and obtained a Bachelor of Science degree in law enforcement. He started his career as a community service officer in the city of Lionel Lakes in 2016, where he stayed until 2019, when he was hired by the Robinsdale Police Department. Then, he got lured to the greener pastures of the Coon Rapids Police Department. Officer Tomzik, you have successfully completed your field training program and thus have earned the right to receive your numbered badge tonight. Badge 196 is yours. We don't recycle badges at the Coon Rapids Police Department, so nobody else has ever worn this badge or this number, and nobody else will ever wear it again after you. As you can see by the officers that showed up here this evening, we're excited and proud to have you on our team. It's our responsibility to provide you the structure and the support, the training, and the encouragement to have a long, safe, successful career in law enforcement, and that's what we intend to do. In return, we ask that you remember that this badge is entrusted to you by the citizens of Coon Rapids. And with that comes the expectation that you always strive to do your job the Coon Rapids way, in a way that models our core values of trust, professionalism, and compassion. So with that being said, at this time, I'd like to ask Officer Tomzik's wife, Lauren, who's a Crystal Police Officer, to step forward. We'll step out to the center here and pin badge 196 on you. And we'll follow that with the mayor administering the oath of office.
All right, raise your right hand. I, Jonathan Tomzik, do solemnly swear.
I, Jonathan Tomzik, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
For the city of Coon Rapids.
And the county of Anoka.
And the county of Anoka.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, Mayor.
They would sign almost anything right now at this point. I don't even think he reads it.
Thank everybody for coming out tonight to support John, and as always, you're welcome to stay and enjoy the entire City Council meeting, or you can step out into the hallway and for some congratulations and photos.
And there they go.
Always gonna be a doozy tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Well, give them a moment to clear. And I suppose there's a couple of different ways we can do this. So, we are on to item 1A that was added this evening, and that is to make a proclamation for DECA Week. Why don't you meet me up front, and we'll do it out there. Give Steve back. There are fighting chants to get you on camera. All right, let's say, whereas, DECA is an association of marketing students which prepare the students to be academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders, and, whereas, the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, and, whereas, DECA's guiding principles are designed to explain how DECA fulfills their mission, and, whereas, DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive program that integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, connects to business, and promotes competition, and, whereas, DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders, and, whereas, DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork, and, now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, officially proclaim November 13 through 17, 2023, as DECA Week in the city of Coon Rapids, proclaimed the 7th day of November, 2023. Congratulations. Here's your proclamation. But before I hand it to you, I would like you to take the mic, introduce yourself, and whoever wants to tell us a little bit about what you've been up to or what you're excited about this year for DECA, have at it.
All right, thank you. My name is Anna Kelly. I'm the Coon Rapids DECA president.
My name is Liliana Gonya. I'm the Coon Rapids Vice President.
My name is Logan Barker. I'm a first-year chapter member.
Back to you, Anna. Tell us something.
So, some things that we just got done with. We had our FLC conference, which was a kickoff competition for new members and just getting your toes in the water for what competition is. Coon Rapids is really good at that. We had like one-third of our chapter that went, get onstage, which was really good. And we also have a food drive coming up during National DECA Week, so throughout our school, we're gonna have a food drive, and then January 6, 7, and 8 is our district competition, yeah.
Okay. Could you tell me what that competition was, that first thing, the toll-wet thing? What was that? What kind of a competition was it?
So, we competed in one event, and we also did our comprehensive exam, which is 100 questions in an hour. We had...
Did anybody else think she said hiccup competition? It wasn't just me. What was it? What kind of...
So, it was a kickoff competition.
Kickoff. Thank you. I'm going... I don't understand this at all. Okay, excellent. And where will the conference be? Would you say January?
Yeah, it'll be at the Crown Plaza. We're actually looking for judges, so if you want to email Blake Bodenberg, if you want to be a judge for that, we're in need of judges.
Every year.
Every year.
Absolutely. All right, well, here's your proclamation.
Thank you so much.
And thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go back and watch a tape on that, because I swore. All right, we are up to, oh boy, we're up to the consent agenda, and we have 11 items on our consent agenda. So, I'll settle in. Let me tell you a tale. The first one is item 3. Yes? What am I doing wrong?
Approval of minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, item 2, approval of the minutes from the October 17 meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I motion to approve the minutes of October 17.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Novak. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Those minutes are approved. And now, we're gonna move on to the... Okay. 11 items on the consent agenda this evening. Item 3 is to accept the third-quarter financial report, assuming the council has no specific questions, no action is necessary other than to acknowledge receipt of the third-quarter financial report. Well, that was an easy one. Item 4, the next item on our consent, is to approve a recycling center staffing agreement with Atlas Staffing Incorporated. The Coon Rapids Recycling Center contracts staffing for its daily needs at the facility, and an annual contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated was approved by the city council on December 6, 2022. Atlas has proven to be a great fit at the recycling center, and the staff would like to renew the contract from November 1, 2023, through November 1, 2024. So, we're looking to approve the contract with Atlas Staffing Incorporated for contracted staffing at the recycling center. Next item on the consent agenda, which is item 5, is to adopt Resolution 23-111, approving the gambling premises permit for Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association at Buffalo Wild Wings 3395 River Rapids Drive Northwest. The Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association currently operates at three additional locations, Scoop's Pub, Muddy Cow Bar &amp; Grill, and Shannon Clark Pizza, and the Buffalo Wild Wings location would be operating as a pull-tab dispensing device-only premises. So, we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-111, a resolution concurring with issuance of a gambling premises permit for the Coon Rapids Youth Hockey Association at Buffalo Wild Wings 3395 River Rapids Drive. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item 6, is to approve an on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, wine, and Sunday liquor license for Stumpy's Hatchet House, 12760 Riverdale Boulevard. License and investigation fees have been paid. Police departments are conducting the background investigation as required by the city's code, and approval of the license will be conditioned upon the completion of a successful background investigation, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license, and the submittal of a certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage. So, a few things to check off there yet, all right. But, subject to those things, we're looking to approve issuance of on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, wine, and Sunday liquor license to... I'm just gonna have to spell this out. T-A-H-A-B 317 LLC, doing business as Stumpy's Hatchet House, located at 12760 Riverdale Boulevard Northwest, contingent upon completion of a successful background investigation, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license, and submittal of a certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage. I didn't need to read that twice, because I needed to get it into the motion, so. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item 7 this evening, is to approve waiver of a fireworks display license fee for Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. The Community Strength Foundation has submitted an application to conduct a fireworks display as part of the holiday tree lighting event being held at Boulevard Park on December 9, 2023. The foundation has requested this in prior years for other events, and the council has granted the waiver. So, we're looking to approve a waiver of a $115 license fee for fireworks display as part of the holiday tree lighting event being held at Boulevard Park on December 9, 2023. And we're on to item 8, which is to adopt Resolution 23-112, accepting a donation for a park bench. The city has administered a park bench donation program for many years, and the family of Jerry, and I'm sorry, is it Jawish, maybe, would like to donate $700 for a park bench to honor his memory. The city council is required to accept financial donations by resolution per state statute, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-112 to accept a $700 donation from the family of Jerry Jawish. Item 9, is to approve a second-hand dealer license for the Modern Sportsman LLC, 20 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest. The Modern Sportsman LLC has submitted an application for second-hand dealer licensing to be used in conjunction with the Gun Club license they applied for earlier this year. The Gun Club will be their primary business, however, they also plan to buy and sell previously-owned firearms at their establishment, which requires a second-hand dealer license. The Modern Sportsman LLC does have a federal firearms license, so we're looking to approve the second-hand dealer license for the Modern Sportsman LLC, to be located at 20 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, contingent upon a successful background investigation, and the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official. Item 10. Item 10 is to approve a master contracting agreement for citywide electrical repairs to formalize the city's ongoing relationship with contractors. A master contracting agreement has been prepared to provide consistency in the approach to complete needed repairs, speed up the process to ensure items are addressed in a timely manner, and allow staff to better manage services provided. Due to the specialized nature of electrical repairs and as opposed to relying on a time and material proposal for each specific project, staff is requesting the council consider approving master agreements with Forest Lake Contracting Incorporated and Muska Electric Company, and the agreements outline the process that will be undertaken for work encompassing general electric and streetlight repairs and emergency traffic signal repairs. So, we're looking to approve a master contracting agreements with Forest Lake Contracting Incorporated and Muska Electric Company, and authorize city officials to execute the attached agreements for professional contracting services. Next item on our agenda, item 11, is to adopt Resolution 23-119, approving an appointment to the planning commission. The planning commission currently has one vacant seat after former Commissioner Ron Bradley resigned a few months ago. Staff advertised for the vacancy and solicited applications from interested individuals. An interview committee consisting of Mayor Cook, Councilmember Geisler, and community development staff interviewed five candidates on October 26. The interview committee recommends that the council appoint David Noe to the seat because the term of the seat expires. Now, did we figure that out?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we did. It was an administrative change with the vacancy because we learned that we were out of alignment, and we had too many expiring in 2024. We'd like to have not all of them going at once, should they elect to not be reappointed. So, just to stagger the terms more appropriately and not to impact a sitting commissioner to make the adjustment, we made it with this appointment.
Okay, very good. That was encouraging that our... Well, not encouraging. It was nice that our planning commission chairman was on top of that.
I appreciate that.
Verified that, yeah. Okay, because the term of the seat expires at the end of 2023, we're looking to appoint Mr. Noe to fill the remainder of the current term and also reappoint him to a full term that expires at the end of 2026. So, we're looking to adopt Resolution 23-119, approving an appointment to the planning commission. We have two items left on our consent agenda. This is item 12, adopt Resolution 23-120, accepting a donation from Lowe's of Coon Rapids. Lowe's of Coon Rapids is donating two Pella single-hung windows and an upright 20 cubic foot freezer for use in the new fire station. The windows will be used for training, and the upright freezer will be used in the emergency management preparedness. So, we're looking to accept this donation from Lowe's Coon Rapids store by adopting Resolution 23-120. And then, item 13, which is the 11th and final item on our consent agenda, is to approve a waiver of Christmas tree sales license fees for Boy Scout Troop 212. Boy Scout Troop 212 has submitted an application to operate a Christmas tree lot at 1919 Coon Rapids Boulevard at the Coon Rapids VFW. The troop has requested this in years past, and the council has always granted the waiver. The Boy Scouts are a nonprofit organization, so we're looking to approve the waiver of a $95 license fee and $25 background investigation fee for Boy Scout Troop 212 to operate a Christmas tree lot at 1919 Coon Rapids Boulevard. And that's our consent agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
Thank you for reading through that extremely long consent agenda. I think it's the longest one since I've been on the council. And with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Novak. Is there any questions or clarification needed from anything on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Carlson?
I have no questions or clarifications, but I just want to thank Lowe's for their generous donation to our fire station. I also wanted to offer condolences and thank the Jawish family. The Jawishes are just a wonderful Morris By family. We had the pleasure of having kids about the same age, so we got to see a lot of the Jawishes. Fabulous people. And what a great way to memorialize Jerry. You know, I mean, memorialize your loved one at the same time, give back to the community. It's just a great thing.
Absolutely. Excellent.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all of the applicants for the planning commission opening, and note that all five candidates that we ended up interviewing, I think there were over 10 original applicants, were all wonderful people, and it's great to see that many people excited and interested in helping and supporting the community. So, just wanted to say thank you for everybody who put in an application.
And that was exactly where I was gonna go, because we really had some impressive candidates for our planning commission, and we're definitely gonna keep those on file for any future vacancies or any other opportunities. And I would have been thrilled with any of them, and we had, I think we had, I don't know how many total applications we had, but for staff to even cull it down to those five would have been challenging, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Just a quick question of Mr. Timmer. For the citywide electrical repair, are we looking at keeping all five of those, as I understand it? The three that we currently have, and then the additional two?
Yes, Councilmember Armstrong, what this does is adds to that pool. Primarily, what we have is one that does streetlights and two that do inside. One of these contractors specializes in traffic signal work, which we were lacking, and the other can do both indoor and outdoor, so it would maintain the pool of five.
Okay, thank you.
Was that your way of calling me out for not reading through the entire thing? Because they were listed in there, but I was trying to find ways to skip them. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischoviac?
I don't have any specific questions, but just a couple of comments on the third-quarter financial report. First, I want to thank Ms. Hanson for the report. It was a really well-done third-quarter report. We're right on track. And just a couple of comments, maybe for council on this, is we have money in the Riverdale Area Fund, and I just think it would be great if we could think about spending some money in the Riverdale Area Fund for banners and things that go down the street, so we could think about that. And then, secondly, I was looking at the capital equipment fund, and there is, you know, $2.6 million in the capital equipment fund, so as I mentioned in a previous meeting, I'd like to take a look at maybe possibly using some of that money to pay for the fire truck as opposed to bonding for it next year. So, just wanted to make those comments, get them out there in front of the council.
All right. Any other comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14 is to conduct a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinances 2290, 2291, and Resolution 23-113, setting fees and charges. And Ms. Hanson... These are kind of the things you hit for us last meeting, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. Following the public hearing that needs to be held tonight, council will be asked to adopt the two ordinances that were introduced at the last meeting. One was for adjusting license fees, service fees, and other charges in our code that are required to be set by ordinance. Those were adjusted using a 3.5% inflationary factor. The ordinance pertaining to permits and inspections, we're recommending no changes on. Additionally, there is a resolution for fees and charges that are not set by ordinance, so we use the same 3.5% inflationary factor. The current 23 rate is in the resolution along with the 24 proposed. There, just to highlight, there's a couple... So, there's an addition. This year, we're including adjustments for right-of-way permits, park dedication fees, and some hydrant meter rental permits that haven't been looked at since the early 2000s. And then, there's two new fees on there, underwater services related to the radio-read opt-out policy that the council considered. Are there any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Any questions before we open the public hearing? And it's my understanding the public hearing is really just for the liquor license fees, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, if there's no further questions, we will open the public hearing on the increases to the liquor license fees. Is anybody here to address council for the public hearing on the liquor license fees going twice? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing and look to council for... We've got about four motions there. And can we take those together, all four together?
I think that's fine.
Is that a nod? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That works.
Usually Dave nods.
I will give the Dave nod down.
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2290, revising certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1, 2024, and adopt ordinance 2291, establishing permit and inspection fees for the Building Inspections Division as authorized by Minnesota Statute Section 16B dot 62 subdivision 1, effective January 1, 2024, and authorize summary publication of ordinances 2290 and 2291, and adopt Resolution 23-113, establishing certain fees and charges.
Second.
We have a motion by Rayrower and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion on this? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We're on item 15, under Old Business, consider adoption of ordinance 2292, restricting parking on 95th Lane from Foley Boulevard, 150 feet northwest to Norway Street. Does anybody have any questions on this, or somebody want to push it forward?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Rayrower?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2292, restricting parking on 95th Lane from Foley Boulevard, approximately 150 feet northwest towards Norway Street.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 16... Item 16 is to consider approval of an agreement with Anoka Hennepin School District 11 for police department support. We should probably go. Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Oh, well, okay. I was going to actually, as Chief Steiner, if you wanted to say a few words on that one.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I thought that maybe I make a motion to.
Take this, put it back on the table, right?
Take it off the table.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mayor, council, I would recommend before discussion that you would take, take it off the table and then.
Okay.
So it's officially back because it was tabled a few weeks ago, and so we should make that.
It seemed like it was a different, it seemed like it was a different subject. So I, I felt like it was, okay, all right. So you have a motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
By Griscoviac, second by Novak. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. So it's been removed from the table. I thought you were putting it on the table and I thought, holy cow, did I miss a meeting here or what?
The last meeting, I put it on the table, so I thought I'd remove it from the table.
Chief Steiner, did you want to hit a few of the highlights on anything that may have changed or, I don't think actually anything changed, but go ahead.
I don't think anything has changed. As you know, we're seeking for the approval to enter into the MOU or contract with the district to provide school resource officer, school resource officers in Coon Rapids High School, Coon Rapids Middle School, Northdale Middle School, River Trail Learning Center, and then also in that same contract is the teaching of dare at the elementary schools. And as, this topic has certainly got a lot of attention, and it centers around this, a lot of agencies, including our suspending our contracts, or, we didn't have a contract, but suspending our SRO programs with the schools due to some recent amendments to this student discipline law. And that caused a lot of concern and is still causing a lot of concern. What's changed is the binding opinion by the Attorney General's Office, and that is, in a nutshell, saying, we need to follow 609.06, which is the use of force standard that officers have always been held to. And that guidance has been accepted by the county attorney's office. It's also been accepted by the League of Minnesota Cities, which is our insurer. And because of that binding opinion, we feel it's the right decision to go back into the schools at this time with the understanding and the commitment that we've had from our elected officials that they're going to address this and, and take care of the ambiguity in the law and make this an acceptable situation for us to continue long-term. We've all heard this now that we've been in the schools in Coon Rapids since 1974. We've been teaching dare since 1989. It's a, it's a relationship that we value and, and I know they value as well. So we feel comfortable going back in with the understanding that they're going to address these in a more permanent fashion and make it an acceptable solution for us. So we're asking council to approve the entering into a contract or an MOU with the school district to get school resource officer services and dare funded again.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions from, for Chief Steiner?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Everyone up here knows how strongly I feel on this issue. And I just had a question. If there is a problem going down the line, say, a month from now, what kind of conditions are there that, if needs be, we can bring these officers back to a position of safety?
Well, we've always had, and we've always had the ability to pull out with notice, and we still have that. It's much shorter now. I believe we have it, I believe it's 10 days right now. So we have to give them 10, 10 days notice to exit the contract, which is much shorter. I think it may have been 60 before, 30 or 60. And, and we've also made that expectation clear. In the school district, we've been very transparent with them. If this, if this doesn't get addressed in the legislature, it's probably not a, it's probably not a good long-term solution. We need it addressed. We've made that very clear. They understand that and, and we believe that.
I was one of those who really pushed to table this issue in the first place. I will say that this does have my support because it has the chief's support, and I will trust his expertise.
Well, and I, and I think it helped for us to have a workshop with the county attorney to come in and just spend more time, let's, let's just hit the brakes for a second and talk about it. And, and I, and I had a much better understanding after that workshop, and I appreciate everybody taking the time to do that. Councilmember Ray Rower.
Yeah, ditto. I am in support of this because our police chief, our city attorney, are all in support of this. And so with that, I make a motion to approve the 2023-2024 agreement for education services and fostering a safe and welcoming school environment with Anoka Hennepin School District 11, and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower. You know, Geisler, I think you were a victim of electronics. Carlson beat you just by a second. Motion by Carlson, or a second by Carlson, I mean. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I just want to say, I do appreciate all the additional dialogue that we had on this and I feel much more comfortable and, you know, I feel more comfortable. Obviously, our legislature needs to fix what they did. And, and so hopefully we can go into a regular contract next year. And I do feel much, I feel better about it. And also, I know darn well that the parents and the staff are going to feel much better about it as well.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, Councilmember Armstrong.
Yeah, I just want to briefly echo what others have said, but I want to thank staff and, and everyone that worked on rewriting this contract because I'm a whole lot more comfortable with the way it's worded now than it was worded before. We all want to protect our students. We want to protect the schools, but at the same time, we want to protect the officers and give them the ability to do their jobs safely and effectively. And I, I think with this wording and with the assurances we've been given that, that will hopefully take place.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, and that motion carries. Item 17 is to consider resolution 23-108, 23-109, and 23-110, approving the miscellaneous 2023-2 appealed assessment levy. Ms. Hanson, is there anything that you want to update us on these?
There's no changes to the amounts listed in the memo as of today. The amount totals $38,385.68, inclusive of assessment fees.
Okay. Mr., I was going to ask Mr. Brody to provide a clarification on this. Would you like to do it?
Hi, Ron.
Okay.
Get my head nod. And I assume you were referring to the administrative procedure ordinance section 2-104.
Yeah, that limiting the civil penalty to $10,000. Apparently, there was some ambiguity there that they wanted to clear up.
There was, and I can provide counsel with that. I, I sit on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, so I was present during the conversation that was had. And so there was some confusion with that $10,000 mark as it was written in the ordinance. And we had a very good discussion about it. And so the, the understanding is that there is a limit on a single violation of $10,000, but as a policy, the city never reaches that. We, we cap our, our penalties at that 2,400, just as a matter of policy. So even though we could go up, we don't. And so there was just the need for some clarification that, albeit the ordinance reads that there's a maximum of $10,000, it's individual, it's for an individual violation itself, not as an offense as a whole, if that makes sense.
Okay. All right. So does anybody have any questions on either, for either thing there? Okay, otherwise we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I make a motion to adopt resolutions 23-108, 23-109, and 23-110, adopting 2023 miscellaneous special assessments, contested miscellaneous assessments, one-year, three-year, and seven-year.
Second. Okay, motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. And of course, that was 2023, sub-two, or whatever that two is. But we'll make sure that that was in the motion. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Just a quick comment. I had one constituent that got to go through the process of, of working with the Board of Appeals, and it, it was an interesting situation because the, the individual did not know that they had done anything wrong. They wrote their appeal letter. They were told how to handle it. They came to the, to the, to the board and kind of pled their case, so to speak. And the board helped walk them through that. They came to a go and sin no more type resolution, and they were very happy with the end result because, you know, they thought you can't fight City Hall. And, and obviously, it worked the way it's supposed to work, and everybody came out more knowledgeable and happy with the end result, so.
Yeah, I've always been very impressed with the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. They, they end up with some, they end up in very tough, some very tough cases, and they work hard to come to a fair, a fair and equitable resolution. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And we're on to item 18, which is, there it is. Consider resolution number 23-118, approving a 2024 regional solicitation grant application. Mr. Hammer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. The city is again going for the regional solicitation federal grant for the 610 East River Road interchange. That application is due the beginning of December. We will again be requesting the maximum $10 million. Under this program, it requires a local match, and we continue to work on that through freight application, quarters of commerce, legislative assistance. And so one of the requirements is getting a resolution of support out of the city council, along with letters of support from our partners, which we are currently working on. So this is just one box we need to check. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I would recommend we adopt this resolution of support and get this application in by the deadline.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's, let's give it to her. Councilmember Geisler, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. So I would make a motion to adopt resolution 23-118, approving the application for a roadway expansion grant through the Metropolitan Council's 2024 Regional Solicitation Program to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Ray Rower. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 19 is an introduction, consider introduction of an ordinance to permit beekeeping and an introduction of an ordinance revising the definition of non-domestic animals. Ms. Doro, did you want to present on this or talk about it?
I can if you would like, yes.
Oh, you can, oh, sure, you can come up prepared.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I just have a few slides to run through as we talk about this. The, this is a brief history of the topic of beekeeping in the city. It's been an area of interest for the city council for a few years now. You originally had a work session back in 2019 and have considered pilot projects over the years. The most recent step that we took was doing a two-year pilot project, allowing beekeepers to keep hives on city-owned property that went through this sort of warm season in 2023. When, considering what we could possibly do for an ordinance, we looked at peer and neighboring cities to see what they did. I've listed out a few here and indicated how many apiaries or permit holders they have in the city and whether or not they use a model ordinance. As you can see, there are a few cities that use a model ordinance here. There are more across the metro area. But the Minnesota hobby beekeepers put together a model ordinance that is what we have based our draft ordinance on. The ordinance in your packet lists setbacks for hives and apiaries. It also outlines hive density allowances. The sort of lowest density or smallest property in the city could keep up to two hives on that property, and we have a graduated increase in the allowable number of hives with an increase in acreage. We also require flyaway barriers to disperse the flight path of bees if the hives are within 25 feet of a property line. And then there will be a permit process instituted that would require proof of beekeeping coursework so that we know that our residents are well-educated in beekeeping. For the permitting process, we would propose the same fee as the chicken permit. We would do an initial inspection, so it would be, we think, sort of the same level of administrative work upfront. And then when we had a work session with you all recently, there was concern about the level of discretion that we might be able to have over applications. So I wanted to highlight some language that is in the ordinance that allows the permit to impose any conditions that the city might deem necessary to protect people or neighboring uses from unsanitary conditions, noise, odors, annoyance, or protect the public health and safety. And we believe that this language will allow us to make sure that beekeeping in the city is conducted in a reasonable and safe manner. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? Well.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Just thank you for the background. Thank you for your research. Thank you for looking at the other cities. I think it was very thorough and well thought out, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Novak.
I've been fairly silent on this issue, but I think it's time to come clean. My wife really wants a beehive, and so I've been trying not to sweeten this, so to speak, with any kind of honey. Don't get me started. So again, yes, thank you very much. This is something I think a lot of people are really looking forward to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I was on the fence until I found out about Mrs. Novak. No, Mr. Mayor, I'm, yeah, I, I was skeptical at first, but through our work sessions, our conversations, I've been totally swayed to being fully. I was just concerned about anaphylactic shock and such like, but I'm, I'm convinced that we're going to handle it in a safe way. So I, I have been swayed on the issue, and so I'm 100% behind it.
Well, and there was no rushing into this. We have been testing this. We have been trying this. We've been talking about it, and I, I think this seems very reasonable. So if there are no further questions, we will consider an ordinance permitting beekeeping in the city introduced, and an ordinance revising the definition of non-domestic animals to exclude bees. We'll consider that introduced as well. And then we'll be, if anybody has any concerns or questions, make sure you reach out to staff or to council, because we will be taking action on this at the next meeting. Thank you. Item 20 is to, yes, item 20 is to consider adoption of resolutions 23-114, 23-115, 23-116, and 23-117, setting the 2024 fees and charges for the Community and Recreation Services Department. Ms. Ring.
Sure. Mayor Cook and councilmembers, I can kind of hit the highlights a little bit here. These are our fees that we renew each year. In our department, we have CTN cable TV where those rates are just adjusted for inflation, about 3% to 3.5%. Moving over to our recreation and park facilities, for our river wind and other park buildings, including Riverview and Sand Creek, we adjusted those rates about 5% to, just to covering costs. And we tried to work out the differential a little bit better for a resident rate versus a non-resident rate. So that has better strategy and consistency now, where that's about a 20% differential that our residents are getting a little bit better rate on that. We also went back to $150 deposit for our park shelters. We had tried reducing it to $100. We found that we really needed to go back to that $150 deposit to just have a little bit more owner. just have a little bit more, um, ownership as they're using that facility, that they're taking good care of it, to get that deposit back. We had a very minor increase for summer softball of just $10 and just $5 for fall ball. And then in our civic center, we have been incrementally adjusting those rates. We were very behind the marketplace. Um, we're actually looking for rates for approval tonight for 2025 because we're always working ahead for weddings and banquets and things like that that inquire about dates very early. So that proposal is a 10% cost adjustment that is reflective of cleaning costs and, um, staff monitoring fees, um, helps relate to all of those elements that are increasing in costs. And then there is a new element on the fee schedule about the mobile stage. That is a piece of equipment that the city owns with the Community Strength Foundation. And because that stage has been at other community events, we're starting to get more inquiries from nonprofits and other groups wondering if they can rent it. So we developed a plan for policy who can rent it and what that fee would be. And the proposal there is $500 per day, which is basically just covering costs of the licensed driver to deliver it and return it, as well as some administration fee, and then a little bit for stage rental. So I can answer any questions if you have them.
There's probably not many other places that are going to be using it in the winter, but I know that was one of our big concerns when we bought that was to not haul it on salty roads, so.
Yeah, I would say absolutely. And, um, the fire chief and I usually make a decision about if the roads are dry enough to take it out to the city event, which is typically the tree lighting in partnership with the Community Strength Foundation. So yes, that would be a consideration that it would not be going out on salty roads.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Sure.
So the, the use of that mobile stage, is this within city limits?
Correct, that is part of the policy.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I have a question because I was put on the spot the other day by somebody. Like a Boy Scout, a Boy Scout troop that wanted to hold an event down in the civic center, are they held to the same standard for pricing as who? Because I, because they ended up going up to Ham Lake for their, whatever it was they were hosting because they thought it was kind of cost prohibitive. And I thought we used to have a break for them.
It would depend on the day. So for instance, our civic groups are paying the same rate that a private party would pay on Saturday. Um, that's a very prime time. However, they would be paying less than a third if they had an event or a banquet or something like that, um, if it was Monday through Thursday. So there's a considerable price differential if you do an event Monday through Thursday.
Okay, yeah, and he didn't say what specific day it was, so I, that could have been. Thank you. All right. Anybody have any other questions on this? Any other discussion? All right, so do you want to, let's see, we're not, this is not an introduction, this is actually, we need a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt resolutions twenty-three dash one fourteen, twenty-three dash one fifteen, twenty-three dash one sixteen, and twenty-three dash one seventeen establishing certain fees and charges for CTN, city park facilities, and recreation activities, fees related to the city slash civic center and the mobile stage.
Second. We have a motion by Carlson and a second by Griscoviac. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item twenty-one, and that's, it's our last item on the agenda. Thanks for hanging in there with us. All we have left is open mic, so. Uh, consider resolution twenty-three dash one twenty-one amending the stormwater utility fund budget. Mr. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. Staff is requesting a budget amendment for approximately $33,000. Uh, this would be used within the stormwater utility fund to purchase another wing plow that goes on a tractor that the city currently owns. We use it, these plows on our, um, loaders, and we even rent, uh, tractor in the wintertime. It helps on our cul-de-sacs. Uh, with Fire Three, we kind of figured that's one more place we got to send this. And to get to places quickly and address them, we wanted to get another one of those machinable plows, repurpose one of our existing, uh, tractors that we're using for ice maintenance. Now, we can find another piece of equipment that will do that. So we believe we're going to have fund balance available at the end of this year just from some of our maintenance activities. So while, uh, we have to use fund balance initially for the purchase, we believe there's going to be more than enough money to cover that by the time the year ends under the maintenance funds. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I know I should know the answer to this, but why are we using stormwater utility fund? We don't, because we don't use that for like buying plow trucks, do we? Do we?
When we look at, um, snow and ice removal, it does include chemicals, it does include, um, um, brines and salts and other things. So it, it is a stormwater, I think we use stormwater fees, uh, stormwater dollars on the, um, the Yoma blades because it helps with the stormwater component of clearing those roads and keeping the ditches and, and the gutters clean. So especially in the cul-de-sac areas where you're trying to get to that curb, uh, we find this as a reasonable solution for, um, snow and ice removal.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
To that same point, I, I was going to ask the same question, but is this utility fund, this isn't an enterprise utility fund that we're using these dollars out of, is it?
Yes, it, it's a stormwater utility, very much like our sanitary or our water main.
So it's considered an enterprise fund?
Correct.
Yep, funded that way. Yeah, I just thought it was, I didn't think snow plowing or any element of snow plowing was funded by, you know, the enterprise utility fund. So I had the same question that you had.
You would have done a better job asking it, though.
Maybe, not. So it did, did seem a little odd to me.
I will say it supplements those funds for snow removal. It's not our primary budgetary fund.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
As the resident of a cul-de-sac, um, I will move to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash one twenty-one amending the 2023 stormwater utility fund budget.
Second.
Motion by Novak, second by Carlson. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I see our finance director has something to share with us.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. Um, so most, um, equipment purchases that are related to governmental funds are accounted for in the capital equipment, but if there's anything for water, sewer, enterprise, those are all paid for out of those funds. So that's why, um, the equipment's going to be used on a stormwater, um, vehicle, I believe, from when we talked about. So there's, it just depends on the type of fund, um, and where that gets charged out of. That quick.
This is where I just trust them, you know, I really do. Okay, we have a self-serving motion by Councilmember Novak. Second from Councilmember Carlson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Looks like you're going to get plowed out this year.
Thank goodness.
All right. We're up to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic? All right, checking. Okay. Uh, I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. What do we, uh, what do we have? We had an election today, so we started a meeting an hour later, but probably no results of that yet. Not that that's really a city. What do we got for other business? Anything? Mr. Stemwell? Oh, wait a minute. Councilmember Armstrong?
I had a blast at Rocky's, Rocky's, uh, pumpkin patch. I don't know about their, anybody else that attended, but that was a lot of fun. It was, it gets bigger and bigger every year, and I, I don't know if we ran out of pumpkins this year or not. I, it, it looked like there was plenty to go around.
I thought we were going to run out of pumpkins because there were so many people there, but even near the end, there were still some pumpkins out there. I mean, I, I don't think Councilmember Carlson ran out of dad jokes either.
No, I came well, well-prepared.
Calling bingo, but they had to put up with dad jokes.
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak?
I did just want to mention the passing of a fantastic citizen of Coon Rapids, Mrs. Phyllis Erickson. I've known her essentially my entire life. She was one of my mother's best friends. I found out that she did pass away last month. Actually, I'm sorry now, it is now November. She passed away in late September. And, uh, anybody who knew Phil, and a lot of people did, um, know that we are much less without her. And from the moment I heard the news, all I could think of was her and my mom catching up on the last 19 years over coffee.
The, uh, Mrs. Erickson was very pivotal in the Miss Coon Rapids Association and just very involved. And in fact, her, uh, daughter went on to become Miss Minnesota in, I think, seventy-six or seventy-seven.
I believe she was Miss Coon Rapids in seventy-six and then Miss Minnesota in seventy-seven, and Lori was also Miss Coon Rapids.
Yep, yep, yep. So, yep, no, she will miss. My, my mom, well, I would sit in the yard to watch the parades with her. So she's missed the last couple of years there. All right, other business.
Mayor, council, I was just going to mention that city offices will be closed on Friday in observance of Veterans Day, which occurs on Saturday, and so the preceding day for government offices is the holiday. And so we will resume normal office hours on Monday, but if you have city business, please come in before Thursday or next week.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, council, a few updates. We just had an open house for the Trunk Highway Ten, Third Lane, uh, each direction between Hanson and Round Lake Boulevard. That was conducted last week. Uh, there will be a second offshoot from that meeting for noise barriers. Noise barriers are contemplated on that project. It's going out to vote amongst the impacted residents now. Um, so there is a special meeting on the 28th of November in the civic center as well to provide information about what that process looks like for those specifically receiving ballots that are going out in the mail soon. Uh, I will also add that we are planning a next open house for six-ten East River Road. That is planned for December sixth, um, and that will be at the ACAP building down on Foley Boulevard near Coon Rapids Boulevard. Uh, those mailings will be going out in the next week or two. And then finally, I will add a pretty significant road closure on Coon Creek Boulevard, uh, north of Main Street, uh, to do some bridge work in Oka County, replacing some culverts. So there will be a, a little bit of pain for the winter, uh, driving that direction, snowplow activities, um, and just general traffic. And I'm happy to speak more about any of those if anyone asks questions.
I'm looking forward to the construction finishing on Coon Rapids Boulevard. It's getting, we're getting closer and closer. The barrels are getting, you know, opened up and it's, uh, but it's, it's really going to be a lot nicer for pedestrians, though. You know, even like at the intersection of Direct, uh, Direct River Drive, the trail connections now, they're, it's a lot narrower connection, so it should be a lot safer.
How's that dual left working on?
The dual left over Mississippi Boulevard is wonderful. Yeah, yeah, that was always a challenge because you had that, well, you had two lefts, but one of them was a straight head lane, too. So now we've got two dedicated left lanes there. And I have not been up there when the college has gotten out, and that's, of course, the busiest time, but it's, I've, I've been up there through, it works a lot better.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Can I ask a clarification from Mr. Hammer on the, um, the bridge work on Coon Rapids, Coon Creek, just north of Main Street there? Is that segment of roadway going to be closed off? I mean, completely to traffic either way?
Yes, Councilmember Griscoviac, other than local traffic unless your residence or your property is there at the crossing, it will be closed. You'll have to come from the north if you're north of the creek or south if you're south.
And is there an expected timeframe on that? Is that all winter? Is that for the next four or five months?
It, it, it's going to be at least three to four months. And then you got to get the paving done, and so it's, it's likely, um, we're talking all winter.
Okay. And then the other clarification, the meeting on November 28th regarding the sound walls, is that the meeting on the 28th? Is that it?
That's correct.
And that's at City Center? Do you know what time that is?
I want to say it's either four to six or five to seven. I can clarify that for you.
I can find out, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other business to come before council tonight? We'll take that as a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Novak and a second from Councilmember Carlson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.